Welcome, it's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025. The Twilla City Council and the Redevelopment Agency of Twilla City are meeting in a work meeting. This meeting is being held at the Twilla City Hall Council Chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Twilla, Utah. We are also streaming this electronically on the Twilla City YouTube channel. We will start with a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady and I'm present. We'll move on to item three, the mayor's report.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. First, I wanted to report back, I received an email last week from the, really it was Glenn Stevens from the Twilla Pioneer Museum, the Sons of Pioneer Museum. And they used to receive some tourism money through grants through the county and they needed to keep track of like how many visitors they had and where those visitors came from. So that we know with those tourism funds, as you spend it on marketing, that you really want to prove that you're bringing people in that are from outside of our area. So he sent me this report that I thought was really, really exciting, that they, within the last 12 months, they have had visitors from four foreign countries. I mean, people from outside the United States are coming to see their museum. That's really cool. 90 different cities in 27 different states. There were also 60 different zip codes in Utah, so not Twillas, but there were 60 other zip codes in the state of Utah. So they had a total of 154 different zip codes of different people throughout the state and our United States that are visiting our museums. So they care about our history and it's just really exciting. So the next few things that I just wanted to quickly run through is for those, for those people who are saying there's nothing to do in Twilla, I don't know what they did on Saturday. Because we were running from one event to another and I know I'm gonna miss some that were happening, but these are the ones that we attended and knew what was going on, I guess basically. But we started first thing in the morning with a ribbon cutting for Ross. Great store, we got to go on a little personal tour, she showed us how, how they stock their stores and how it all works. It was very impressive. So we appreciated them and we so appreciate them being in our community. They are also, Ross is a big supporter nationwide of the Boys and Girls Club and they gave a $5,000 check to our local Boys and Girls Club. So that was really awesome. Then we went up to the Witches and Waffles event that was done by our Community Engagement Division and it was very well attended, a lot of adults and children that were dressed up as witches and warlocks and they had awesome waffles and all kinds of gummy worms and stuff you could put on your waffles. And then they did a really awesome art project. So it was just a very well attended and supported event and it was free of charge for our residents. And then we went down to the Twilla City Fire Department Station Number Three for their open house. This is Fire Prevention Week and I know that they had hundreds and hundreds of kids go through the station in the past couple of weeks and teaching them about fire safety. I think what, what really impresses me the most is how our volunteer firefighters feel about the department and how they not only are giving of their time to fight the fires and provide that safety for our residents, but all they put into this open house. And they did a lot of teaching the kids about how fires work and how not to open a door and let more air in, that makes the fire worse. And when they did those demonstrations, it was just like silent. Everyone was really listening, adults and kids. And then they had an awesome little obstacle course at the back where they could spray water on a house and, and do some other really fun things. So I just very much appreciate everyone who gave of their time that day and then of course, free lunch too. So they were giving, they went through 600, I think he told me 600 hot dogs, 600, 800, a lot of hot dogs. So it was awesome, very good. And then because I spent a long time at the fire department, I missed the special needs carnival, but I wanted to let people know that though that is again done as volunteers in this community and it is Chris and Bernice Sloan who make this happen. They work so hard to get a lot of volunteers down there and help to provide this Halloween carnival for special needs kids. It's just giving back to the community, which is really great. Then we went out to Leitner Poma. For those of you who don't know what Leitner Poma is, this is a large ski manufacturer that has now located in Twilla. They celebrated their one year anniversary with a great free community event called Pumpkins to Powder. Powder referring to snow, so we're gonna have a lot of snow. They, they make snow out there, they have machines that make snow, but they have machines that groom the snow and the ski lifts, they make the ski lifts, the gondolas, they make all of that ski equipment. It is just a really, really great place that's providing a lot of high quality jobs for our community. And again, the event was fun, free food and they had pictures and swag and all kinds of really fun stuff, so we're grateful to them. And then we kind of wound up the day with Kickin' Cancer's Can. Again, Andrea Rawlings, who's just a member of our, our community who, who was affected by cancer with a friend of hers and created this event, and I don't know how many years ago, it's been a long time. 15, 15 years ago, seems like it's been even longer than that. But they, this is a huge community event, very well attended, very well supported and they are raising money to give back to members of our community who, who are suffering from cancer, which just about everybody. It's, it's just way too prevalent in our community, as it is, I'm sure, around the world, but I just wanted to thank her personally for putting out all of her own money and spending to, to make this happen for our community. So again, a wonderful community event. We had our Miss Twilla City royalty there. We always appreciate the things that they are at and support for us. So like I say, if there's nothing to do, you're not looking in the right place, because we have tons of things. So I just appreciate the wonderful community we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Winn. We'll move on to item four, the council members' report. We'll start with Councilman McCall.
I did attend, since the last meeting, the convention that most of us attended in Salt Lake. I've done quite a few meet the candidates and quite a few ribbon cuttings. The Ross, I was with, at the Ross and Jack, whatever, wait a minute, I get it off.
Jack in the Box.
Jack in the Box. I know it was a Jack. No. I made it to that one. And it's been interesting. And I also attended the department out there and that is pretty cool, to see the snow making machines that they actually put together out here. Interesting. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Hanson.
A couple of things, I, the LHC Committee hasn't been meeting for a while, but we finally had our first meeting again this month, so we got that back on board and we got a bunch of community partners going there and so there are about 12 people attending that now, so that's, that's good. We got that back on board and we're working with the state again, so that funding can keep coming through to our city. I had a question, I've asked a couple citizens, because it's in my corner of town now, the fiber guys are doing little underground, so they're leaving behind a mess at some places and so who do they contact or who do they try to reach out to to get that fixed?
Is there, you just do it yourself or whatever?
Yeah, we would like for people to contact them directly, but who knows how to do that. So if you will call the city and talk to the Public Works Department, they will get, if they can provide us with an address and what the problem is, Jamie and his awesome team will get ahold of that contractor, because there is more than one contractor out there. And yes, they have a responsibility to put it back the way that it was before they got there, so just please call.
It seems like the biggest complaint is sprinklers. They're digging up where sprinklers are and they're not putting that back so they work and so forth, so yeah. Which I can complain about my own, because they did it to mine, but I just fixed them. But yeah, so it's, that is, it seems like it's more of a problem. So Jamie, you'll get a few calls, I'm sure. Okay. The election, there's lots of going on with the elections. I've been to a couple of the election events and we got a couple of people in the council that are running, so they're doing a good job and all the people, you know, there seem to be doing okay and as elections are hard and you don't agree with everything that's being said, you know, but it's, they're good events and so, but yeah, it was good to go to them and hear what everybody has to say and we're gonna have some changes in coming January, so yeah. We had a couple of big rainstorms this last couple of weeks and so there was citizens affected by that. A couple of them called me and I just told them to call the attorney's office and get that handled for them. And then, one other thing, the flood, I think this is flood related mostly, but left-hand fork where you go camping, the city campgrounds, I went, we signed up for the upper campground and we went up there and holy cow, it was flooded. But I called Darwin and talked to him about it and he's already got it fixed, so I appreciate you guys, the city jumping on that and getting that done and the other people can, since the deer hunt's coming up, the people are gonna be up there deer hunting and camping and stuff, so thank you for doing that, Darwin and your group to do that. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goachis.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciated the mayor's report. I was out of town and didn't get to attend all the wonderful events on the weekend, so it was really fun to hear everything that did occur, but we haven't met for quite a while because of the convention, so I had quite a few things that I wanted to report on. I attended a chamber luncheon that was presented by Josh Romney, ribbon cutting at the Central State's Business at the Peterson Industrial Depot, attended a library board meeting, Chase is here doing a fabulous job ribbon cutting for Summit Healthcare Bath &amp; Body. I attended an open house for the new enzyme engineering building, new location, it was very nice. The council supported the new Deseret Peak High School homecoming and we walked in the parade and threw candy to a lot of happy kids. I attended an emergency preparedness fireside that was presented by Bucky Whitehouse, our county emergency management leader. We also attended the League of Cities and Towns Annual Convention and had the opportunity to attend a lot of good breakout sessions and brought back some good ideas to be able to help our, our city. We also supported Twilla High School's homecoming and enjoyed throwing candy to the happy kids. Attended the Children's Justice Center Black Tie and Blue Jeans Event, that's a very fun fundraiser and Casino Night and we always spend way too much money when we go there, but it goes to a good cause, so it was, it was really fun. I was able to host a meet the candidate night for the Women's Civic League and we invited the public to attend that. Appreciate the candidates taking their time to come and inform the citizens. I think that people should take the time to be informed voters and that this is your opportunity. I attended the ribbon cutting at Jack in the Box, delicious food and they are very pleased with their opening and support that they're getting from the community. We had a ribbon cutting for the new Ocker Aesthetics Medical Office, so we have not only new businesses to eat at, but places to go for our medical needs and that's really good for our community. And then today I watched Facebook Live with the Chamber of Commerce Meet the Candidate Luncheon and also on the 9th, I was out of town. But you know, because of the magic of Facebook and we have recorded information, I was able to watch both of those events and just again, want to congratulate those who are running for public office and to wish them the best of luck. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Manzio.
Sure. I went to all of those same events, so I'm not gonna relist them all, but I wanted to just point out a couple of highlights. When we were at the Jack in the Box ribbon cutting, they mentioned that Twilla was a very business friendly city. I was very happy to hear that, because as we know, bringing more business brings less taxes for residents. So it's important to me to focus on being business friendly and that's good to hear that they thought that was so. And then we had three companies that I know of, I'm sure there are more, but three that I know of that have done some great things in our community. Central State's, after the ribbon cutting, had, took their employees, or about 12 of them, to the Ritz Theater and they ripped out the chairs from Theater Two and separated the metal from the fabric. They worked really hard for a couple of hours, so they're a great company that's giving back to the community. The Leitner Poma Open House, I thought was also a great way to give back to the community, a way to support the community. And then Smith's, which is opening soon, has hired a local artist to paint a mural in their entryway, I guess, at the Smith Store and I saw the beginnings of the mural, it will be beautiful. And it's a lady who lives here in Twilla, so it's great. And then I wanted to just mention that I went, I serve on the board of the New Reflections House, that's one of my assignments, and they recently, along with Valley Mental Health, had some awards that they gave out and their lifetime achievement award, I guess, I'm probably calling it something wrong, but was given to the Cummings that live in Twilla. We see Suzie at a lot of chamber events and the golf course and everywhere, but she and her husband received this award, along with an award for the CJC and the ambulance service. So I thought those were great, they're all great community partners and well deserved awards. And then I just wanted to give, last thing, a shout out, kind of like the mayor said, to just the volunteers we have in our community who head up these things, including our fire department and our Community Engagement Department, that have had so many activities lately. They're paid staff, but they're donating their time after all the, I mean, I just stopped at the Haunted, Haunted Park before city council meeting and they're all there, you know, working hard, well after office hours, so we have a great community and happy to be a part of it. Thanks.
Thank you. I attended many of these events as well, I won't relist them all, but just touch on a few things. So the Utah League of Cities and Towns Convention that most of us attended, every time I go to that, I learn that other cities have the same problems that we have, but we do a lot of great things in Twilla and I think compared to cities our size, we're doing wonderful things. I, Kickin' Cancer's Can, I briefly stopped by there, that's one of my favorite things to attend and my kids love attending that as well. And then the Homecoming Parades, those are always great events and I love the small town field that we have in our community. And then the Meet the Candidates, there's a lot of people who go to Facebook to get information about candidates and I highly encourage you to reach out to the candidates and get accurate information. There's a lot of misinformation going around on, on the internet, so please reach out to the candidates. I know that I've met most of them and they're willing to answer your questions. That concludes my report. We'll move on to our discussion items. The first discussion item is a discussion on a Public Works update, this is presented by Jamie Grandprey, the Public Works Director.
You brought the whole crew.
Yeah, four kids. So I'm here to give an update, so good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity for me to come and give you a brief update on Public Works.
Is your mic on? I don't.
I can.
I can hear you, but I don't know.
Is the green light on it?
I know in the past they could hear online, even though it didn't seem like the intercom system was working.
Try that out. We can hear it.
Yeah.
I don't know if everybody else can.
Talk loud, I guess. Maybe someone can check on YouTube.
I gotta make sure Paul can hear. Okay, Paul can hear a bit. So thanks for the opportunity for me to give a brief update on Public Works. For those that might know or might not know, I have hit my five-year anniversary with the city, so it's been five years, it seems like it's been four, but it's only been five. So a lot's happened in the last five years and as you can tell from my slide show and the presentation I'm about to give, there's a lot that's happened in the last five years. And so I want to take a moment to highlight some of the major accomplishments from the past five years. It's not a comprehensive list by any means, I mean, that would take us all night to go through a lot of that stuff, and so I kind of just took a selection of some of the notable stuff that we've done over the last five years to kind of show what we as a team have done to make the city better. I've invited some of my staff, which have shown up tonight, to, to secure this conversation and to do the discussion and for me to also acknowledge them as we get going through the, through the presentation. These projects span different areas from infrastructure improvements and roadway upgrades to sustainability efforts and facility enhancements. They're not listed in order, or in order as from what I did five years ago to what we did last week, but just some of the stuff that, you know, as I kind of put this PowerPoint here, just kind of some of the things that kind of was not working and just kind of putting the slides together. So to begin, I want to really give you the slide show. It's fine, just a minute. Going, push it this way? Okay.
Oh, is that better? There we go.
There you go.
Now I won't lose my voice by the end. Okay. So there's our, there's our picture, a fairly recent picture that we did, what, the first part of September, when we have kind of our luncheon for the group after we have our hectic summers and kind of a safety, and so we took that picture and kind of one of the last pictures that Mayor Winn's gonna have with my staff, and so we just wanted to make sure we had a good picture for that. So that's the slide that we're gonna start with and the picture that we're gonna start with, and so we're gonna move on to slide two and we're gonna talk about the Streets Division. So a critical part of our Public Works team that's responsible for maintaining and preserving the integrity of our streets and roadways. The division is led by Jeff Allred, sitting in the middle there, who brings both leadership and hands-on experience to the role. The team is made up of 11 dedicated employees who work year-round to keep our streets safe, drivable and well-maintained for the public. Their work often goes unseen when done well, but is essential and I want to take a moment to acknowledge their continued efforts. So we have just some pictures up there and we'll kind of look at these as we get going through the slides as well, but just a project on Smelter, a traffic signal that we installed at 520 and some work that we did on Clifford. If you can tell on the Clifford picture, it might be kind of hard to tell, but I kind of got photobombed when I was taking that picture by Mr. Buck. So, can you see that, Ed? You might not need to go up middle, or Settlement Canyon, you might just need to go on Clifford. So, okay, slide three. So one of the big projects that we had was a grant-funded project, was Drew Bay and as Drew Bay and kind of the whole summer it took Drew Bay to go put, get put back together, Drew Bay did end up becoming a decent project that was a very good project, I think, for the city. It went well for the most part and the final product was, I think, pretty decent. This is a critical corridor in our transportation network. The project was made possible through grant funding, I think it was that third quarter sales tax with the county, which allowed us to take on a more comprehensive scope of work without placing the full burden on our local resources. This project did include a mill and overlay of the roadway and widening, as you can tell, the road is a lot wider today than it was back then, in addition to a multi-use trail to enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety and stormwater improvements to support long-term drainage and roadway integrity. This project not only improves safety and accessibility for drivers, cyclists and pedestrians alike, but it also demonstrates how leveraging outside funding sources can significantly enhance our local infrastructure. I also threw a picture of the Ocker Hills Golf Course parking lot, which was not a project that was done by Public Works, but one that we did help kind of with inspections and just kind of overseeing, kind of a little bit with Paul and Darwin. And so with that, you know, we always kind of partner with the other departments on helping kind of get projects to fruition and so that I just kind of wanted to kind of highlight that project and hopefully Darwin's okay with me doing that. Slide four. So this slide shows Clifford Drive, again, photobomb on the left picture, well, my left, I think, which is your left, of Mr. Buck as he was kind of exiting the frame there. And this was one of the first projects, I think my first summer, where we did a mill and overlay of, no, this was actually second summer, I believe, that we did the mill and overlay of Clifford and Lisa and 420. And so the old asphalt was replaced and removed, or was removed and replaced with a new surface, as you can see in the photo, which kind of helps, which helps tremendously in improving the drivability and extending the life of the street. We also installed a new water line of this section of road, which we try to do if we can. Sometimes it works out best to help be able to do that with the asphalt, sometimes we might have to do it prior, just kind of depending on how the projects kind of come together. Moving on to next slide, on Smelter Road, where we did a couple of things there. Recently, we did the chip seal, as you can see in the one photo, and then the photo on the left is when we kind of changed out, did the bulb there and kind of fixed the alignment that was on Smelter Road, if you can remember a few years back, when that kind of just was kind of open right there. So we undertook a realignment project to improve overall safety and traffic flow. The area had some longstanding alignment issues and addressing them has helped reduce potential hazards for drivers. Following the realignment, we did the chip seal treatment, which is kind of like what we like to try to do to preserve the road as much as we can before it gets too out of shape. So that's kind of what we did with Smelter there. And then we'll move on to slide six. This is a couple of road widening projects, so we had a couple of roads in town that wasn't fully width and so that was Seventh Street between, gosh, I'm not gonna get these right, Jeff, what's that, Seventh Street between, is that Fifth and Sixth?
It is.
Nor is it, okay. Yeah, so on Seventh Street and then on 200 West, which is between Fifth and Sixth North. And so those are a couple of road widening projects that we've accomplished over the past few years. Stormwater was done on both of those projects. We did do some water line on Seventh Street and the ditch that was along the west boundary of 200 West there has now been piped with HP Storm Drain Pipe. And so that will hopefully help with drainage issues and, and kind of accessibility through there. Been able to get through there easier now, Ed, that that's opened up.
The wide road.
Yeah, the wide road. I'll be coming to you later for a sidewalk.
That'd be great to be in the sidewalk there for the kids too, so.
Yeah, and that's still on the, yeah, we're still working on that. Okay, then over on to slide seven. I've got the Seventh Street, this is kind of where the road dead end, it wasn't punched through, the covert there is kind of open and so we installed, there was a covert that got installed to help with getting water across there and to get the road punched through, which we opened that up and kind of got traffic now flowing down to 1,000 North. And then on 2,000 North, just recently, that sidewalk picture was just completed and that's kind of west of Mount West Hospital that goes down to that lower road that now helps kind of to get the kids from the new high school over to Maverick. They still cut through the field, but yeah, but there is sidewalks, so, yeah. And so with that, you know, we still are trying to get sidewalks replaced as much as we can throughout town and trying to get the dilapidated ones taken care of and we're still pushing 50/50 for residents so that want to get sidewalk replaced, so we're glad that we're able to help and get sidewalks replaced as much as we can. Okay, and then slide eight is 420 South, which was a mill and overlay and water line that was done a few years back. And then 2,000 North, where we just recently did a chip seal from Aaron Drive West to 400 West and then it just, just got striped just recently. And so that has kind of helped preserve that section of roadway in that area. From Aaron Drive East, the road's a little bit more out of shape and it's gonna need a little bit more than just a chip seal, so that's the reason why we didn't go all the way to SR 36. The next slide is Nottingham Circle, cul-de-sac, which was a mill and overlay and streetlight improvements, and I'll talk about streetlights here in just a second. And then Lisa Way was a mill and overlay that was taking place, that took place and water line improvements. And I'll talk about streetlights here in just a second. And then Lisa Way was a mill and overlay that was taken place, that took place, and water line improvements that was done. And then on to the next slide, which is Barra Boulevard. And Barra Boulevard was something that we tried new, which is a mineral bond. And so a mineral bond's kind of a different, kind of a, between a slurry and a chip seal. And this kind of gives kind of more of a smoother appearance on the road, but also kind of gives a treatment that tends to last a little bit longer than most. And so we tried Barra Boulevard as kind of our first kind of look at how this goes. We looked at some that they did in the county, saw from anywhere from five, five years to just, you know, the previous year where it kind of worked out really well in the county. And so we decided to do that with Barra and Aaron Drive, which we did last summer. And this is the picture I just took just recently, so that still shows you how well that road still looks with that mineral bond on there. Usually with like a slurry, we don't even get that a year later. So it's, so far, it's doing pretty good for us, or as what we see, it's doing pretty good. And then slide 11 is Deer Hollow and Elk Meadows Loop. This was, I think, done in 2021. I think that was our, one of the first, my first summers, or was it the second summer? I can't always remember it all, kind of comes together. But we did a mill and overlay on most, a section of that, and then we did a chip seal the following year for the rest of it. If you remember, on Deer Hollow, we had a couple of islands that were in the middle that were pretty beat up that we took out and just opened that road right up and has done really well since then. And so that's kind of an older, that did get the chip seal, like I said, and still looks pretty good to this day. And so with that, we're going to move on to the next slide, which is streetlights and traffic signals. Not going to talk a whole lot about streetlights. Do want to just kind of brush up on traffic signals. When I started as Public Works Director in July of '21, the city didn't own a single traffic signal. As of today, we are now at number four and soon to be five, as we will inherit the one that they'll do at Smith's and Home Depot there on 2400 North when that one gets installed. The four signals are located at Lodestone Drive and Utah Avenue, Aaron Drive and 2,000 North, and then we have two on 1,000 North, one at 100 East and one at 520 East. And so with those, it's kind of helped with the traffic and getting traffic through some of the major areas in town that where we were seeing issues. And so you can move to the next slide, Loretta. So that was the Aaron Drive one there and the 1,000 East, and then the 520 East is on the next slide. And then, and then I've got a picture of a solar streetlight on Nottingham Circle. We last year installed 10 more solar streetlights. We tend not to always go solar streetlights, but in cases where electricity is not easily accessible, like we have power in people's backyards trying to get electricity to the front is a little bit harder, and so these solar streetlights come in handy and tend to do really well. I mean, all the ones that we've installed have worked really well. We haven't had any issues with them. The biggest thing is if we get a lot of snow on the panel, they might not work for a day or two if they don't charge, recharge the batteries. But other than that, they tend to work fairly well. And so, and then another responsibility of our Streets Department that they get to do is stormwater. So there's a picture of our covert across there by England Acres on Seventh Street. This is a nice, let's see where, I just want to make sure I don't miss my notes here. This is a nice colorful rendition of the inside of that covert, which helps enhance stormwater flow and reflects the community-minded approach we're taking with public infrastructure. So even though there's a lot of infrastructure projects that need to happen, you know, just trying to get some of these taken off and getting to kind of get some of these water and stormwater brought away from where it needs to go or from where, you know, from the neighborhoods and stuff and get it where it needs to go is helping. And so that's one of the projects that we did with the extension of the Seventh Street through, over to 1,000 North. And then another picture of that same covert, one from the east side and one from the west side, just kind of shows the gravel, the placement of gravel that helps kind of get so that those coverts don't fill up. The last kind of flooding event, even though it wasn't quite finished yet, is the one over on 2400 North, and that kind of one filled up with a lot of debris or a lot of silt from the storms. And so this one actually handled that fairly well and didn't have any problems. Moving on to the next department, it's going to be our Water Division. So the Water Division is responsible for the delivery of safe, reliable culinary water to our residents, a responsibility that requires precision, responsiveness, and constant attention to detail. The division is led by Chris Johnson and supported by a team of nine skilled water operators. Together, they manage our water infrastructure, respond to service issues, and ensure compliance with health and safety standards every single day. Their behind-the-scenes work ensures that clean water continues to flow to homes, businesses, and public facilities throughout the city 24/7. Moving on to the next slide is an inside look of the Barra Wellhouse. If you haven't seen the inside of the Barra Wellhouse, that's what it looks like with our big pump there in the corner, and then you can kind of see the lines coming off the booster pumps, but you really don't see the booster pumps in that picture. But that kind of shows you the scale of what a wellhouse with booster pumps in it for water delivery looks like. One of our newer wells, which has just been completed not too long ago. And then we'll move on to the next picture that kind of shows the outside of the Barra Wellhouse and the Barra 1 million gallon storage tank that's kind of sitting there with the nice landscape on top. So kind of buried, which you really can't tell. You can see the hatch, you can see the couple of J vents coming off the top, but yeah, other than that, it's kind of hidden, and you really don't know it's there unless you really know it's there. So, and then moving on to the next slide is the Red Del Papa Wellhouse over there at Red Del Papa Park. That's a fairly new wellhouse, too, that was constructed just right after or right before the Barra Wellhouse. Yeah, that was bef, you know, that was before, yeah, just getting messed up there. And then we also helped with the Parks Department on putting a parking lot for the Red Del Papa Park and another partnership project that we did with them. And then England Acres, even though England Acres was built before my tenure, we did do some landscape, we did kind of clean the landscape up there, and I did want to highlight that little machine there off to the side and that generator, which we're going to talk about just generators for just a little bit. One of the, another grants that we did, that was to buy, get nine new generators and put them on nine of our wells, which is in progress. I think, where are we at, Chris? We have four or five of those completed?
Five of them are completed, and that's now where they put it up, right?
Yeah, so, okay, so we have five completed. We still have four on the back that are still, they're there, they're just not hooked up yet. Some of them are requiring some electrical upgrades, and we're waiting on some of those parts to come in. And then we do have one at Barra and one at Red Del Papa, so that would be six and seven. And so at the end, we'd actually have 11 that will have generators on them. And then you can tell from the big picture there, that's the one at Barra, and that's like a small mobile home that sits right there. But yeah, that's a pretty good-sized gen set that's sitting right there, and it takes that kind of power to move a big pump and booster pumps. And so that's why it requires a bigger gen set compared to some of those other ones that's not as big. So that's kind of with the Water Department. Wasn't as extensive as the Streets Department, sorry, Chris, but yeah, but some big, some big projects. And then we're always looking for wells, we're always looking to drill some more wells. And so we just did a couple more tests, a couple of test wells at Rogers, which we are going to be able to turn into a production well, and then one at Desert Peak High School, and that one is probably not going to turn out to be a production well. And so at least we got one out of the two sites. Okay, now we're going to move on to the Water Reclamation Division, which plays a crucial role in managing our city sanitary sewer collection system and operating the Water Reclamation Treatment Facility. Division is overseen by Troy Meyer and staffed with five collection operators and seven plant operators, and together they ensure that wastewater is effectively collected, treated, and safely returned to the environment, protecting public health and maintaining compliance with environmental regulations. So one of the key items that I want to just bring up really quick before we move from the slide is when I started in October of 2020, this is kind of where I started. I was the Troy Meyer of the Water Reclamation Division. And so I was tasked with kind of getting our water reclamation facility back up to where it needed to be. And so when I started there, and one of the things I noticed is we had four operators, four treatment plant operators, that were doing about 40 hours of coverage a week from about 7:00 to 3:30 each day and getting a lot of just on-call coming in and a lot of after-hours calls that were coming in. And so noticing that, you know, we have a 24/7 automated treatment facility down there, we decided that it was best to probably try to see if we can get two more operators, which I brought that to Mayor Wynn's attention, and we was able to bring in two more operators. And now we have a schedule that's seven days a week from 7:00 to 5:30, and now we have almost 70 hours per week coverage instead of the 40, which is good for our plant because our plant needed that at the time and still does today. There's a lot of moving processes at that facility, and we do leave it alone at night, and we do have an on-call that goes and checks on things if there's problems. But yeah, that's something that's moving constantly, and so there's, could always be issues. And I think my vision, as I was when I was the superintendent down there, and Troy has kind of kept the same vision and continues to make those improvements. And so I'm going to highlight some of the things that we've done in the last four years down there. So moving on to the second slide, one was bulk water. They were taking water from just a fire hydrant on our system, wasn't being metered by the gallon, it was just being metered as you took it. And so we put in a delivery system now where if a contractor comes and buys water from us, they want 10,000 gallons, they get 10,000 gallons. Once they use 10,000 gallons, it's up, they have to come buy more water. So we brought that in, and then just recently, we had some flooding issues on the north side of the facility with a ditch, and they've done some work to enhance that ditch. So that's a fairly recent project that we just completed that the plant staff did. And then we have a volunteer there that's on the other slide or the other picture that's helping with gopher removal and has been doing very well, I hear. Very well, and he has not been, he has not been just aggressive to our plant staff. So Adrian, if he's still around, just leave him alone, he's good. And so you can tell he's pretty attentive there and looking for gophers. So moving on to the next slide, this is one of the projects that we did. This was kind of in the works when I kind of started with the city and kind of just got it, I seen it through to the end. And this was replacing, we had three slow sand filters that we replaced with two disc membrane filters. That's what you see there is those two filters, and I also put just a picture of the affluent quality of the water there. And if you can tell the difference between that and drinking water, then you've got a pretty good keen eye, because that's some pretty clear water right there. And those that have been down at the plant have seen that, is probably can attest to that, that that's some pretty clean water. And so with that, we went from 3.4 million gallons per day average for those three sand filters to now these two disc membrane filters can produce, can treat up to 17.4 million gallons per day. So we've just, on this process, we've just increased the capacity by quite a bit. So that won't need, there's another cavity, one extra cavity there that in the future, if it gets to the point that we're hitting 17 million gallons per day, we can get another disc filter and increase that capacity even more. So one of the buildings that won't have to be changed out anytime soon, and it's got decent equipment in it. The next slide is clarifier number one. Clarifier number one did finally, after 20 years, decide that it was done and didn't want to go anymore. And so we had to, it's about a million-dollar project to rehab a clarifier. That's a new internal mechanism. It does, when we replace the whole mechanism from top to bottom, it does come with a new warranty, so it is back under warranty again. Sometimes you can just go and replace parts, but that doesn't put it into warranty. If you replace the whole thing, that puts it into warranty again, so we're back into warranty again. We also made some improvements just to the baffles. You can kind of tell on the outskirts of that tank there where we kind of did the covers over the baffles to help with debris and to help with like algae that kind of grows and stuff, that kind of keeps that down. So kind of a good improvement to do to a clarifier. And then the next slide, it's kind of hard to tell in this picture, but I'm looking just kind of those steel plates at the bottom that those pumps are sitting on. When I kind of came in, those pump plates were actually just metal pump plates, and the rust and corrosion was taking over, and I couldn't even, I didn't even know how amazed that those pumps were able to stand on those pump plates. So we did switch those out with stainless steel plates. Both of them been done. The picture on the left is the pumps that take our water from the treatment plant that's been treated up to the ponds at the golf course. And then the other pumps on the right-hand side are our plant return pumps, and those just take water, utility water, back to the plant to use at the plant side. So those, that was another project that was done that's now taken off the list. We don't have to worry about those caving in. And then the next slide is our polymer feed system. We had one polymer feeder that would never work. It was so, it was so old and dilapidated that it was a constant struggle to keep it running. And with bio solids, you have to have polymer, if you understand or if you know the polymer, when we add polymer to sludge, to bio solids, to wet sludge, it pushes the water out for the drying process. And so it would take forever to dry sludge, right? So using polymer helps, that polymer goes inside with that sludge, and that pushes the water out. So that's a key element when we're trying to make bio solids. And so we ended up getting two new polymer feeders and doing an elevated tank, putting that tank on an elevation to help with the gravity to those two feeders. And I think with polymer feed, it's still a struggle to feed polymer even with new feeders, but I think these systems have been doing really well. Polymer is kind of snotty type, you know, material, and a little bit goes a long way. So you get a little bit of snot, and it just takes forever to clean up. So, yeah, not a very good chemical to play with. Going on to the next slide, oxidation ditch. I just got, we've been just doing repairs with the oxidation ditch over the last four years, rotors that have needed to be replaced, mixers. We did replace the socks on the aeration lines, and so I just kind of just showcased some of that stuff that we've done with the oxidation ditch over the last few years. And then moving on to the next is going to be, this is the big one, this is the one I really wanted to address. So our Headworks building, I, you know, the mayor, the council, you're all, I think, just a big help on getting us this building. This building has been one of the biggest things that we've needed. Our old Headworks facility was falling apart, it was having issues, we couldn't grow, there was no room for growth. And the Headworks, everything comes to Headworks first, right? All of the wastewater that comes from town, the first building it hits is Headworks. And so you've got to be able to have a building to handle that. And so this $8.6 million building is a very nice building and a very nice addition to the city, and I think it is going to serve us well, well into the future. You know, they say Headworks buildings are usually only like 20-year animals, and the one that we have, the existing or the previous one kind of out there to the side, that was a 20-year building. This one, we anticipate at least 50 years at least. So it's got the air exchanges, it's got the, the equipment on it to help keep the methanes and keep the gases down so that it doesn't become just a 20-year building. And so as we move inside, the next slide will show us the inside. You can kind of see that we did covers over the channels. It doesn't smell like the other one did. We keeping a lot of the smells down, but a very nice, a very clean building that Troy has committed that he's going to keep it that way. So that is one of the biggest projects that I would really like to talk about. And so with this building, we are 14 million gallons per day, so another building that doesn't need to have any upgrades anytime soon. It does have a third channel for a screen that will increase it to 21 million gallons per day when the need comes. And so, and hopefully that'll be a while, but it is slated for that. And so, and hopefully, that'll be a while, but it is slated for that. Now, the equipment in there, the screens, the grid, they're not going to last no 50 years, you know, but, um, the building itself will. And so, but over time, you know, equipment that's moving all the time, it wears down. It goes out. It just, it gets to a point where it doesn't want to work anymore. And so, with this, though, but it is going to be several years before you'll have to worry about changing out screens or changing out the grid. So, and then, another, uh, look, I think, what's the next slide there, Loretta? This is just on the outside of the west end of the headworks. Those are the three sluice gates that brings the flow into one of those three channels and gets it into the building. Uh, we, and then, the improvements that we did with like landscaping and just the asphalt and kind of cleaning that up. And then, there's that, the, um, well, that the, um, I don't know who, is that the Army? The government test well? Yeah, that come and check the groundwater that kind of sits right there. And we just kind of cleaned that area up. So, was a good project for the city and I think a good project overall. And it's going to be one that's going to last us a long time. And then, just kind of moving on, uh, we are in design to fix some issues with our biosolids. This is our current greenhouse. We do have some issues with the greenhouse. We produce biosolids, three, well, Class A biosolids, three to four, uh, months out of the year. We're trying to shoot for more Class A throughout the year. So, we get into the colder months, like as we're kind of going into now, we have a hard time making Class A biosolids. And so, we get to a point where we end up having to just haul the sludge to, uh, Wasatch Regional. And so, uh, we're got a project, uh, coming down the pike and that's in design right now to put in heated floors and to do, uh, upgrades to the greenhouse as well as replace those turners. And so, hopefully, that will be, um, done with design here in the next few weeks. And we'll be able to get that kind of ready for, as part of the bond, uh, that's going to be coming, uh, shortly. And then, we also have future upgrades to UV, the ultraviolet disinfection system. And that's just the, what we use to treat the, the wastewater and get it ready so that we can send it up to the golf course. So, that's my, uh, presentation for the water rec division. And then, we're going to move on to the fleet division. Fleet division, which is led by Craig Park. And, uh, Craig didn't show up tonight, so I'm not able to, to, uh, to, to let you know who he is. But, uh, supported by a skilled team of three mechanics, the division responsible for maintaining the city's entire fleet of vehicles and equipment, ensuring everything is running safely and efficiently. Their work keeps our operations moving smoothly across all departments from public works trucks to specialized equipment. And so, going into the next slide, I just kind of took some pictures of a couple of vehicles there. Dave will know which truck that is right there, I'm pretty sure. And then, uh, Ryan's truck for Blue Stakes. And then, I took a picture. I've got a, one of, of a police car on the next slide and a, the new fire truck is, uh, is my fleet team sometimes will help with repairs on those vehicles as well. Uh, then, we, uh, kind of move on to, uh, the snow plows, which the fleet does a really good job keeping those going, especially during the winter time. So, our streets division can keep our roads plowed safely. And then, our street sweeper there, uh, that we continue to use to keep the streets clean. And this was back when, it was brand-new before it had labels on it, Jeff. So, a very new picture of the street sweeper. Okay, as we move on to the next slide, uh, one of the projects that, uh, we have been working on and trying to get completed over the last about a year or so, a year and a half, was issues to the current fleet building. Uh, it was a void kind of on that northwest corner of the building, uh, underneath the, kind of the office, offices there. We had a pretty good void under there and some, uh, the first couple rows of cinder block there that was starting to kind of just disintegrate. And so, we were going to be losing a building if we didn't do something to it soon. And so, we did some upgrades to this building. Uh, as you can tell, we kind of put a foundation wall on there to protect the, to protect the building and to protect those layers of bricks that were falling apart. We filled the void in. That's been taken care of. And then, we did a concrete apron around three sides of the building. And we put bollards up. So, we're trying to protect that building as much as we can. But we took a building that was about ready to fall down to, to a building now that could last a lot longer. And so, uh, it was about 158,000 to do those improvements. Mayor Wynn supported us on those and to get that, that was taken care of. And so, now, we have a, a decent building because of that. And so, I just kind of wanted to highlight that building. The next slide just kind of shows a couple more angles of that building and what it looks like today. A couple other improvements that we've made to this building as well. As we did some HVAC upgrades where we have, uh, furnace and, uh, central air for the offices and the storage areas. And then, uh, some new garage door openers was also completed at that building. So, uh, some more funds that have been installed to that building. And then, our public works campus, uh, we recently, well, it's been a few, oh, year or so ago when we took over the old school district bus garage property. And then, we moved out of the offices there that are on the left where our streets division and water division was working out of just kind of an enclosed, uh, salt sheds now that, uh, were, that was turned into offices. And now, they're into some remodeled portables now on the gruss garage. It's opened up a lot more space for us and made a better working environment for our staff. And then, the, kind of the cinder block building there off to the side is now our locker room and restroom for our public work staff. We went from having one toilet up there for our staff to now three toilets. And we, we're using porta-johns for bathroom facilities. And now, we actually have some bathroom facilities for them. So, it's just some improvements that we've been able to accomplish over the last few years, last four years or so. And I just kind of wanted to bring that to you and give you that update and just kind of talk to you about those. And so, as we wrap up on the last slide, I just want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude. First, a heartfelt thank you to Mayor Wynn for her continued support over the past five years with, for me and for my staff and getting us to where we are today. I want to thank you as a city council for your support, uh, and helping us get a lot of these projects done. I think over the last four years, we've done a lot. And even though Dave might not like all the money that I've spent, you know, I think we've done really well on getting a lot of those projects done. And then, of course, my deepest appreciation goes to my team, including my, uh, newest assistant director, Nathan, uh, my streets and fleet supervisors, and my water, water reclamation superintendents. Their hard work, dedication, and expertise are the backbone of every project and service we deliver. And so, thank you for your time today. Thank you for listening to me and bearing with me as I went through this, uh, presentation.
Thank you.
If you have questions, I can help answer questions if you have any questions.
I, I just want to thank your team for their expertise. It, it makes it really easy to approve something when we know that you're the experts and you're dealing with it. And I know my goal's always been to not ignore issues. I know there's, there's still more issues that we can address. But I'm trying, we're trying our best to, to help you make so the city can appreciate you a little more. Um, I don't think anyone really understands it until they can't turn on their water or their toilet doesn't flush properly. So, a lot of behind-the-scenes things. So, publicly, just want to say thank you to you and your team.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. And we appreciate that.
Chairman, I, I also want to just say that, um, Jamie is an exceptional leader. And, uh, I, he first came in again at the rec plant and it, it was a mess when he came in. And he was doing his best to try to, to get things cleaned up down there. When he had the opportunity and we interviewed him and hired him to be the director, things took a complete change with all of public works. He knew the systems. He knew what they needed. And he knew the right questions to ask and what to do to get these things done. So, I, I had the easy job and that was in asking you for the money. He had the, the foresight to really improve all of these things that you have just seen. I also, um, Troy and Jeff and Chris, they are exceptional people who don't just come to work and clock in and do the minimum. They are always thinking about what needs to be improved, what needs to be done, respond when they're called 24/7. These are exceptional men who are doing a job that, again, like you say, we overlook. We, we kind of forget about it because we don't see it until there's a problem. Then, we call. But when, when I contact any of them, they respond instantly. And, and it's never a grumble. It's, you bet, I'll, I'll get, I'll take care of it now. And, and they do. And they do. And I also want to recognize Nathan. Nathan is a brand-new public works assistant director. Jamie has been working so very hard and I needed to get him some help. And thank you for approving that in this year's budget. Nathan, again, is an exceptional human being who knows his job and he cares truly about what he is doing and supporting Jamie. So, you've got a fantastic team here. And, and I hope they'll stay a long time. We appreciate all that they do. They're great people.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I, I was just thinking about, you know, we, we got so many roads and so many different things in our city. And somehow, we got to figure out a way to fund even more yet. You know, you've, you've done a lot of good things with what you've had. But as a city council and as a city, we got to figure out. Because one time, you said, well, we're really kind of got more happening than we, than we're getting done. So, we need to find a way to get, get you more money somehow. So, I guess that's our job. Yeah. But thank you again.
Thank you.
And I just want you to know, Jamie, even though I do criticize 99% of them, I'm just joking.
Same here. Always that 1%.
I just want to know. But, but I do know and understand that things that you need to get things done, I know it costs money. And, um, as long as we are all aware of how much money these things cost. Because I, I mainly do it because I want the citizens to hear it. Because, uh, like was just said, I don't think the average person, it's not that they don't know it. I don't think they look to find out. But almost everything that goes on in your department costs a lot of money. Uh, I mean, from, you figure, um, just the droopy thing from Vine Street to 400. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, that was over a million bucks by the time we finished. And that little stretch of land, I don't think the average person realizes how, that it costs that much money to fix it. And so, when I say it's not that 1%, see, I, I was almost, he was almost free. That 1% was just that truck. And I haven't talked to the mayor yet, but we're going to chat.
Okay.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a comment, too. I, I was at a recent event where somebody asked some questions about our roads and sidewalks. And I said, I don't have all the answers, but what I do know is our, our public works department is top-notch. And after I hear this, I am even more convinced. I've seen things happen. I lived in my house for about 28 years. And I can't say that I ever saw the storm drain shoveled off. But in the last couple of years, I see it. Guys come by with shovel on a regular basis. I went on a tour of the reclamation facility. Um, I'm so, I'm so happy about the things we're doing that we're finally maintaining what we have so that it doesn't cost us more in the long run. So, I certainly appreciate all of your work and thank you for what you're doing for our city.
Thank you.
Can I just, yeah, please. Just my comment is that your presentation was so informative. And I have had the opportunity to go down to the reclamation facility. In fact, Troy made an exception for me. I wasn't able to go when the ribbon cutting happened for the headworks. And I went on my own and received a wonderful tour. And that's a huge campus, um, acres of property. And everything was swept and cleaned. And it was immaculate. I was so impressed. But this information is so valuable. And it is, uh, something that citizens don't realize all the time and effort. And so, I applaud the department heads and your staff for, for just doing a wonderful job. So, thank you for, for your time and effort and keeping our, our residents safe and healthy. And, uh, we just have a wonderful city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks.
We'll move on to item six, which is a closed meeting. We have a closed meeting tonight to discuss litigation and/or property acquisition. I'll entertain a motion to move to a closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move that we, uh, go to a closed meeting to discuss litigation and property acquisition.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. At 6:34 PM, we will recess here and then reconvene in the large conference room.